I guess that needs time to start.
The go button.
Yeah. Actually, Rachel was that. Oh, I got seven o'clock. Close enough seven to get started. Well, it's close enough seven to get started. Everybody, somebody's got seven o'clock. I've got seven o'clock on this. That was hitting seven o'clock. So I'll ask the clerk to call the roll, please.
Ron Smith.
For us.
Alex Haset.
You.
Daniel Britsco.
Here.
Mary Tynes.
She is outside the office making a phone call. She should be here.
Del Hyson.
Here.
Andy Morse.
Yeah.
Andy Payne.
Yeah.
Javier Rabel.
Yeah.
I'll ask you to stand.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. This is what we call protestants. One nation under God, individual with liberty chosen just for.
Thank you. Okay. First matter is the approval of the consent calendar. I moved to a pretty consent calendar. Is there a second?
My second.
And is there any discussion before we take the vote? All in favor?
Hi.
A public forum, Jack, you got anything you want to speak to us about tonight?
No.
We'll open and close the public forum. I haven't got anything really to add to the mayor's report from the work session, other than I came Saturday to Lincoln's presentation on walkability. And it was very good, really good.
I heard that.
It it last, uh, it it. There were some people here that were pre-streetscape people. Hmm. And Claire lives over behind you. And she talked about a walkability study that they had done twenty some years ago.
Well.
And it was it was just a lot of really good information and I'm glad I had the opportunity to be. Yeah, it's all coming together. So we'll hope, hope for the best. How about the town administrator? Do you have a report for us now?
We have a discussion this Saturday, our last work focus group. Is a right where your walkability. So we'll be again as the same as last Saturday. From. Um, same as our last walkability, seven hour ten thirty to twelve thirty. So we'll see next week.
Is that recorded?
Um, I could record it. I haven't recorded any other ones. We've just taken notes.
Because I wanted to make this, but I'm going to be out of town. So I would love to. Maybe I'll just catch up with you to get the highlights or something.
I can say something or Lincoln and I talk about notes, whatever.
Yeah, whatever. Okay.
I was hoping my Facebook now saying that we do have posted it today to let everybody know that we did. I hope we won't be this hard.
Good to see the town clerk is feeling better.
Yeah.
Uh, do you have anything you need to report on this evening?
Yeah.
Okay. Any questions for Javier? Or the clerk, clerk? Okay, well, we're just getting started with our committee reports then starting on the end of Mr. Cassett. If you have anything to report on ARB wise.
ARB has been running pretty smoothly. We had a full attendance last meeting. We are except for a resignation. That is the only thing I kind of put on your radar. We are trying to fill this vacancy right now, but a conversation came up about looking at the charter for ARB and trying to expand the board to more members. I think it'd be better to have more people involved. It might make it easier when we do have vacancies to build, have a forum, stuff like that. I'm not sure if the charter will allow that. But I think it'll be coming up towards council here in a little bit. I think it sounded like the majority of ARB was behind adding a couple more people.
I think the we last count, we had three people interested in the vacancy at this moment and the ARB is going to evaluate those applications and interview those people and probably bring it before us. Next, let's see what we want to do.
Um, excuse me, how many current members?
Should be five. I think we have four.
Four and the one vacancy.
So I think including the chairman.
Can you have more than five?
Well, that's what we're going to look into. I think it'd be, I think it'd be better, not only for discussion, for finding, you know, solutions to things.
Good. Thank you for that report. Let's go. You have anything for us?
Mr. Mayor, just a repeat of what I mentioned in the session last week, the main work of the planning commission has been on the comprehensive plan. And as you mentioned recently, the community meetings that Lincoln has done with the one coming up. I just might have a follow up to what you said. I think you were referencing the two thousand three document that has been really helpful that still affect we, that might be a document. You know, Javier, if if Lincoln has that two thousand three document, that one that was done from the I think it's Thomas Jefferson Planning.
I found it today.
Okay, that that document I have found out multiple times to be very helpful. So just as a reference. It's good, maybe to share that with him.
Yeah.
And and Mr. Mayor, that those, the main point of the meeting we had last week was talking about that. And we also had a conversation, as I mentioned last week, a little bit about the approval that we had done for Mr. Quick, but other than that, those are the issues we talked about.
Any questions for Mr. Britsco?
Are we still tracking or on track to complete the plan by the end of the year?
To my understanding, that's that's correct.
Yeah, we're still staying the same schedule, wrapping up outreach after next week and then right leaning into right.
Right. Okay.
Let's go, let's go. Besides, if you got anything.
I have nothing for you this week. Nothing. Okay.
Want to get past.
Thank you.
I know Mr. Hyson's been busy.
Well, we had a shorter meeting this time, but basically I sent the minutes out, but basically we, for the public, we discussed improvements needed for the website, particularly, you know, searchability, maps, having zoom, a few other things, and maybe the idea of needing some training or some more more feedback from, for more help with the with website. Uh, we discussed maintenance issues and then I guess we'll be talking about that later. Uh, and then we discussed the issue of the emergency preparedness committee was in the government service recommended to pull that into the public safety committee and make that part of that. And I guess we'll talk about that.
Okay. Any questions for Mr. Hyson at this point?
I was just curious on one of the things in the minutes about the website you mentioned, or whoever recommends mentioned that there was a search that defaults to the Google search instead of searching things.
I forgot what it was.
The search on the site.
I think it's Google. I think it's searching our item.
That's what I thought. I I did it on my phone. I had other people did on their phone. And it searches all the items. So I wasn't sure where that came from.
So Scott said he did a search or he hit one of the buttons and it went to some sort of Google.
Well, I think it would be good to make sure that that's validated because if that's not a valid item, because it was suggested to call municode and get them to change that. I wasn't aware that we needed to change that. So
No, I think.
When I do a search, it comes up with all the internal documents and things.
So that's what I have here. This is similar to what we had. But we put in a keyword and then it came forth.
Yeah. So I don't understand where that one came from. So I think you should go back to government services.
Ask about that. Yeah, we'll ask about that. But I think the the searchability part was like if somebody wanted to look up an issue and they could find all the issues about that.
Well, it's still just keywords, right?
Keywords.
Look up zone name or something like that. A whole bunch of things that come up. It searches the PDF documents and it searches the web pages.
It would touch. Okay, well, I think somebody says, so just like, say, they want to look up some, anything about, say sidewalks. And they put in there and then they should get everything, you know, about sidewalks.
Yeah, we have it on the side.
Yeah.
Any other questions? There's more? You have anything for us?
Um, no. Amazing. Not this time.
Okay, Mr. High.
That was the, you know, chief's beliefs like a dude every week. He did lose our voice. But the basically, you know, little child, he's reading out everything that, you know.
We had to see you got your hand back.
Yeah. But yeah, whatever we discussed and it worked out, he ended up there.
Thank you. Any questions for Mr. Payne? I too met with the chief on behalf of the museum this Friday or Saturday as a spirit walk fundraiser for the museum and we're all set on crossing guards. To keep people safe going across the East Main and back across Valley Street to get back to museum at the end of the tour. So uh, that's that's taken care of.
But I was just curious if there's anything with the crossings for Halloween.
Uh, they will do their usual, uh, one card each end of the valley. They encourage people to slow down.
Okay, good.
Mr. Bowling, it's so nice to see you in person.
Nice to be here.
Yeah. Do you have anything for us?
I think what I've been working on is is the insurance issue that we had. I think that's been resolved. Going to you. And I've helped with several of you individually, and then I've said, that's capital like this, that, the other, and then, remember, is any questions, just call me or
Anybody have any questions for Mr. Bowling this evening?
I think I got him straightened out.
Boy, yeah, yeah. I was extremely upset.
We'll see. We'll see.
It just seemed, it just seemed to fall here.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And no one's come, no one's come to arrest me yet, so I think.
I did, I did much to do, but I did nothing. You know, sorry for the admiration.
Okay, then we'll move on to item seven and ask the town administrator to to kick off item seven for us.
Yeah, so I might share that with Bill. We had an informational uh, meetings for the Parks and Rec Committee last Wednesday.
Yeah. And um, I I'm a little frustrated because I don't think the word's out yet, or maybe I haven't got the commitment. I was a little I'm going to put it out again. I just see if scan has a representative. They have one possibly. And see if the hiking club has a representative. But I'd like to have four or five members on on the and maybe the fact that we don't have, maybe the fact that we don't have a a liaison might help, but I I think we could get there, but I maybe it's just not, maybe there's just too much, too much going on right now. So I'll try that again. And if anybody knows of anybody or is interested in being at themselves, um, uh, do that, but I there seemed to be an interest initially, and I got some emails and stuff like that, but I do have one who would definitely be on a loop who knows GIS and he can make maps and things like that. He seemed to be, but I don't know if he could show up regularly because he's he's real busy. So anyway, that's kind of on hold until we we formulate it, I guess. So, but I think it can be. I think it just might take some time. I was, I guess, expecting it to get more rolling pretty quickly, but.
Have we advertised it on the website?
Yes, I think it has, yeah, but the website doesn't, sometimes you gotta look for shiny symptoms pop up to me. So it'd be nice to have a little scroll or something like that, something in front of center with the, with the announcements, but that's down the road.
Is it under announcements, Harvey?
Yes.
That's right.
Yeah, well, you gotta still, you still gotta click.
It usually scrolls, doesn't it?
Yeah.
Right. And it should scroll even with events or things like that, announcements, right?
I don't know exactly what you mean by scroll, but it is on the front.
Yeah, we'll put Parks and Rec Committee on a bit of a hole for the moment. Do we see if we can get a generationally interest? Just the word of mouth, I guess, is gonna be the best. Try and get everybody you know to talk about it. Mr. Town Administrator, you want to move on to item B?
Yeah, so we discussed this previously in the last session, the emergency preparedness committee. Um, Mike handed off to the counselor Morse, since she already communicated with the town that she was in specific action on during this session.
Right. Well, thank you, Javier. So from the works session, I put together a brief which is enclosed for everyone. And since then, Council Hyson put out a note to agree, which I thought was a little bit presumptuous about my motivations for creating this group. So I thought I would lead by speaking to that, why I think this is important. And if you'll recall from previous meetings, from the event in East Palestine, Ohio, you could train around it. That happened not long after I became counselor. And there was a lot of criticism of the local politicians to say they weren't involved enough. They weren't there fast enough. They didn't do enough. And I started to reflect on my own role to say, what, what would I do? What is my responsibility? And there were no clear documents, really, that pointed me to that. So I started doing some digging. For me as a counselor, my top three priorities are public safety, so the safety and well-being of the people in the community. These are my personal uh, priorities. There is nothing written down for everybody else. But public safety, maintaining the town and the amenities that we have in the town. And that's one, what can you call? But this seemed to fit into the priority set of what I had laid out for myself when I took the position. So soon after that, we had the local fire here. And I came down, I was in the ACE at the time, and George Goodman said, hey, there's a fire in town. What's going on? I was like, I wasn't aware. Came down and a lot of people were gathered in town around the first responders. And by that time, it was well under control because thankfully, our local volunteer fire department was right on it. And by luck and other things, everything came together to avert what could have been a much bigger tragedy. And I talked to a lot of local business people because they were all gathered in the street. And the business people said, well, if this were my business, if this were to spread to another building, how would I get notified? What if it was in the middle of the night? They had a lot of questions that I couldn't answer. And when I went back to the documentation, we do have some plans in place, but most of those plans are around flooding and the weather. And so they don't necessarily cover if there's a problem with the trains, if there's a large scale fire. Through this time, I guess in my discussions, Jack started Jack and I started talking about that mutual shared interest in preparedness. And I think although we have some good plans in place, I think we can take them to the next step for the community. Hence, I propose this committee. Jack has already done some outreach to to potential members. I've spoken to Chief Jenkins. He does not see a conflict of interest with the public safety group. So it was one of the first things I did. Um, I heard Counselor Payne's concern last time at the work session about potentially going into the realm of public safety, which that is not the objective of this committee, but I've actually invited Counselor Payne to become a part of this committee, to which he graciously agreed. So if you look at the briefing under the highlights, the proposal for this committee is to focus on emergency preparedness for our community. It's been previously submitted to council, would have three high level objectives. One, to promote the concept of emergency preparedness with local businesses, residents in the community at large, to assess and make better Scottsdale's preparedness state, and to make recommendations to council on future preparedness needs. This committee is not a committee to do work on its own. All of the recommendations will come back to council for their approval. We hope to work on some grants. They might mutually benefit both the preparedness objectives and public safety objectives and having a formal committee that is sanctioned by the town government would give us more credibility in applying for those grants. So those are my motivations and I wanted to make those clear to my colleagues. Okay. Um, with that having said, I would like to make a motion to form this committee in the interest of the community.
I'll second that motion.
Okay. Your motion is accepted and it has been duly seconded. So is there a discussion on this this motion?
Um, yes.
So I'm a hundred percent on board for the clip. That's what my discussion is. Um, just the example that you used with the with the train derailments. I feel like it might be beneficial to either Donna, like had, I feel like a train derailment and the hall hazards and toxic materials and that might go beyond our scope, you know, like being able to reach out to businesses if there's a fire and things like that and a train derailing with, you know, toxic materials, I feel like are the two
Two extremes.
Two extremes of of what it would be. Could we see if we could get county involvement and see if I, if they have any advice as to, you know, and and assistance as to what would happen if if there was
Absolutely. And in fact, events like that. Jack already has a contact at the county and we've talked about doing outreach to them to ask them to participate with us.
Okay.
And we're not trying to, and let me make it clear, we're not trying to interfere or step into first responder space. But what we're trying to do is to educate people and let them, you know, better prepare them for what to do in the meantime. If something happens, you should have a to-go bag. You should have extra medications. Here's evacuation routes. This is what you can expect to happen. So when I talked to those business owners, they didn't know. In a bigger event, they wouldn't know either. I would venture to say, I mean, I live not far outside of downtown, but I can't hear that siren if it goes off. They've done testing. I can't hear it. So what about other people outside of zone, right? They need to know these things. Some people I don't even think are aware that that exists. If something were to happen, the siren would go off and what that means. So these are the kinds of educational things that we would help hope to bring. We would build on what FEMA has already, what the county has. Where the county falls short is if there's a local fire here in Scottsdale, they're not going to have it plugged into their alert system to get everybody in town and stuff, right? So we would have to fill that kind of gap. Alex, did you?
I was just gonna say, I feel like there's a reasonable response from the town as well. So maybe we're not, if a train derails, maybe we're not doing, you know, everything or getting in the way of people, but we could have a pledge from, you know, somebody with school buses to give people, you know, things that we can do that can help out that aren't necessarily taking charge, but definitely not doing what we can before versus when we get there.
And what's our collective role, right? Do we need to be present? Are we supposed to be helping people? I didn't know. And honestly, I still don't know. I believe that Javier as town administrator is our incident commander in town. Incident commander also controls funding if emergency funds need to be released. I didn't know that until I started digging on this. The mayor, I think, would act as our communication spokesperson. When the fire people were here, the news was right on it. And people, they were trying to get in and disrupt the first responders' work. And the first responders were very clear. Um, I'm in the middle of something. I have nothing, nothing to do with this until I'm done, right? So they were very serious and focused. But if it were bigger, somebody would need to talk to the media and we don't want just anybody talking to the media about that. We want our official spokesman doing that. So if a news person comes up to you, to me, are we supposed to say anything? Not sure, right? We don't have those kinds of written procedures down. Like, those are the things I think we need to clarify.
I can tell you that they didn't have anything in place at that time. I can volunteer to call that home, that's my home, and find out who their town council is now and maybe get some information from them to see what their current place is and what their current.
Yeah, that, that would be fabulous, Melody. That would be really fabulous to get some of their, and maybe get a joint Zoom meeting. If they're willing to talk to us about some lessons learned from their from their incident and what the council learned from that. So we have businesses that want to be alerted. Um, Jack brought up the uh, fire boxes that businesses can purchase. They give keys to the fire department. Fire department will have access to the building immediately if something goes wrong, but I'm not sure all businesses know about this. So we need to work with the chamber. We need to work with the county. We need to work with other organizations. Um, Jack, do you have something to add?
So I did learn recently that it is in a regional operations plan, which is in the town office. Andy Burke's office, so there is a plan of action.
Yes, last time we updated that plan that Jack refers to, we talked about train derailments because prior to that, there had another train derailment of tank cars at Lynchburg.
I heard that.
After that, we figured we'd never start talking about it here.
And how long ago was that?
Three seventeen.
Yeah, so it's a bit of a time to update.
Yeah, it's been worth updating. Every so many years.
Yeah, all of our plans, I think, just need a second glance.
So that is a county issue. We're working on it right now. I have no EGM as of right now. So if I learn something new, I'll address it.
Okay, that's good. Thanks.
I'll bring this up on the the emergency preparedness uh, session that attended, I think it was, uh, twenty seventeen. Um, Scottville was specifically chosen because of the river, because of the railroad. And we had, as I said in the workshop, we had multiple agencies involved. However, the town administrator and police department in Scottville will not. We had to take a, we had an online class. It took about about ten hours to complete this class just to extend discussion. So I I managed to figure out why um, the police and and the town administrator weren't involved. So that leads me to believe that there with the regional uh, preparedness group, that Scottville is a void there.
Where was that? Was it a county?
It was at Air Force Park. So I, what I would like to to see in the formation of this group, first and foremost, let's see what's out there right now.
Yeah.
Let's go to the assistant county administrator. He is the incident chief. I'm assuming for our area because I don't know who is. So but he's he's the go-to guy. And of course, the CRTs with FEMA, what are they doing? They, pre-COVID, they were active. Post-COVID, I haven't heard much about them. So that's, so that's two agencies that if we're not a part of them, um, we need to be a part of them because they have uh, you know, the resources. And that's what they do. So we can learn a lot from them. Um, I think we could spend wheels not to talk with these folks.
Yeah, I don't disagree.
You know. So uh, and I might have missed, you know, formally the committee. But, you know, again, when you've got two or three agencies and this committee being part of that, uh, working on emergency preparedness for the region. And this committee being four of us, uh, working on emergency preparedness for the region. Everybody needs to be on the same page.
It's big for you.
So, you know, if you're, if you've got an evacuation route, it goes that way and the the boss of. Uh, the reasons, you go this way.
Right.
Then you've got a problem right there. And I think I I want to take a step in. Um, to the old, um. Specifically picked out trains. Um. Melanie lives in the, in the, in East Island, she. Um, but she knows where the rail line is. I I work for railroad. That one and one, two weeks later, they had a derailment in Detroit. But when you say a thousand train accidents, that's not. A fact.
A fact.
Um. A railcar has. Four wheels on. If they're backing into an industry and one wheel goes on the ground, it's a derailment. If a thousand years go over the ground, it's a derailment. So just what I just talked about, the one thousand and one. Other words.
That number makes sense.
Ninety-eight percent of these things are. Are just simple, technical issues where. The wheel came off the track, all the maintenance issues, all the grid, etc. Don't go by that, you know.
Okay.
But it was kind of funny that same company um. Had these derailments within two weeks of each other and uh. I will say that that community has not been treated well um by the federal agencies or by railroad that. Both they accident.
Yeah, and I think we should do at least a little bit more particular.
So we can probably learn a lot from them about what to look out for and something like that. Now, that's. The good thing about CSX coming through here is is mainly COVID. And we didn't have a lot of property um on our town boundary. It's all the buildings go, so we wouldn't lose buildings with derailments as far as all the top end of the door. Um, and I don't think we die even, you know, unless someone was standing by the track, we wouldn't use any any bodies. Um, but it would make a mess, sure. Um, but but we don't have a lot of hazard material coming through here, which is a good thing. I do remember that really much, and that was a bad thing, because it was right above the railway. So anyway.
Thank you.
My, um, I mean, I like the idea of having something like that, but I, whatever the case, I think it's got to be closely connected and coordinated with. With the police and the fire and uh, now my concerns is really not, uh, it wasn't in the strategic plan and it's. And it's, I don't think it's a, it's a priority in our town. I mean, it's it's nice to have. Charter committees, but we got so many inactive right now. I mean, I think. And we've seen with the couple heads of plan and all that, it'd be nice to have, you know, if you have the energy to really be have. I mean, we need beautification, we need maintenance, we need web. Uh, these are all inactive. Uh, events is a big one. We don't have that going anywhere, but I just feel like we got some other priorities. But I I I like the idea of, uh, because Jack's really knowledgeable, but I think maybe to have it as a advisory or temporary committee to. To to uh, to advise and help, you know, the police and the fire and and public service. And, you know, it could come up with procedures and maps and things like that, that that would be goo- good to have, uh. But I don't see it as, to me, I don't see it as a criminal committee to deal with ongoing problems like some of the others. I mean, these are. These are things that could happen, disasters, but um, I think some of those procedures and maps and and whatever could be. Put into the the website and and included, but as as a committee itself, I just feel it's it's duplicated.
One of the things I I just want to say, thank you, Councilor Heiser. Uh, first of all, I thank you that you're interested in doing this. I think it's a great idea and. I think it'll be good because it has your enthusiasm behind it. That's the biggest thing that it has and. The one nice thing too, other than the chartered committees, we can. Dabble in committees and see how they work and if they don't work. So if you're, you want to put your energy into it, working with Councilman Payne and. Get it, see what you can do. I think that's great. And if we find out over time that it ties somewhere into some other way. I think that's what you'll find, you know, you, in other words, you'll find in the research that either this committee needs to continue to stand or. It will help solve some issues. But one of the things I would say too, that was interesting. In the company that I work for, World Strides, after September eleventh, two thousand and one happened. There was a moment where one of the educators in our company asked a higher up, you know, what we, what do you all do in this circumstance? And at the time, we didn't have a plan and so that we developed one. And I think one of the things that'll be interesting, even if it's. Takes you six months or a year or whatever, is you'll probably find a few places that it would be good that. It helps us to know what to do and and whatever that critical moment is.
Right.
So when you know, and and that may be one of the benefits of it is that you will have a chance to think a few things through. So when X happens, whatever X is, some of those agencies will be identified. And I think to go back to Council Payne's point is we tie in, you know, it may be that it's a, it's an attachment to. The structure that's already there, whether it's through the county or whether through some agency, but it'll help us to know. Maybe it involves some cellphone tree or it involves things that we haven't thought about that it, that we can activate.
Right.
I go back to something like an active shooter or something where, you know, if there was a a critical moment that was happening. Where people needed to immediately know, there's, there's a threat to the town.
Right.
This moment where we need to know in a minute. And and there, that kind of stuff, the only way that's going to be known is with some technology or some kind of. Apps that people use or even though it's a way that we then tap into. Uh, so anyways, I I think your effort's great. What it'll turn out to be, I'm not sure, but because it has the stamp of your energy behind it, I'm excited about it.
Well, thank you. And, you know, it may be that this is not something that will continue year on year, but right now, I think there's enough. Information that needs to be pulled together. I certainly would like to understand my role, our collective role in that. Update the plans and if it goes a year or then it doesn't go anywhere, then that's okay too. So I I think you're making a good point about it being organic and just being flexible with it.
App is very interesting. I was thinking that we could like have the whole town, whoever wanted to be on an emergency.
Exactly.
Email chain where, you know, email could go out immediately.
Or a text, we could get a grant for a text app that would alert me through texts and email and.
Right, yeah, like some kind of like Scottsville app where.
You're right. That's the kind of things that we've talked about, Jack and I, that.
I mean.
The town would benefit from.
Even beyond the preparedness.
I mean, even if there's a road closure.
Even if there's a road closure, the meetings that are happening on Saturday, you know, to disseminate information. Um.
That's why I think this technology will spill into other areas.
You know, a couple coders.
One of the other things I'll mention is actually, I failed, I think of this example, you may remember when we had. Some of the effects here of the Canadian fires.
Mm-hmm.
Well, I happened to be in DC the week that it was the worst and when I went up there, I didn't even know about this. And we were ident, we were getting updates from our office and when we travel and we're out representing our groups. I was, I was acting as a leader with the tour, with the tour. We kept getting updates and when it went from orange to red, I thought, what is purple? And purple is basically get inside.
Right, stay inside.
Well, and that's.
Run the time.
But but that was, it's it's just an example where you needed real-time updates quickly and and we were able to do that. And maybe again, as a town, I think, I think there's just, there, there are things and. And even that, that's an example, again, when I went up there, that was not an issue that was even really recognized. I mean, people, people knew about it, but it hap, within just a couple of days, it became an an issue that affected much of the East Coast.
Right.
So anyways, it's just, there are things that happen.
And and because this, you know, enters into one of my priorities of public safety, the third of which is. Financial uh viability and soundness. So that's my third priority that I think as a council is a must-do. But because this was so close to the public safety, it is not public safety, but it has an indirect tie to it is. Sort of why it fell on my radar. Any other question?
Well, I I agree with that. I think Palestine, that's toxic chemicals, the only thing that trains carry are coal, so I don't think that's an issue. But I do think it would be good to have some procedures for tornadoes, hurricanes, fire. And what are the, what are the, um, you know, the policies and what's the preparedness for that and how that works. Ordered with the fire and the police, you know, that kind of thing. I think that was, that would be valuable to have. But uh, train rights, what are you going to do about train rights then? But I, I, but I do think coordination is 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 really, really important with the. The fire and police.
Okay.
Yes, but, and there are the questions? So I think we need to do this by a a poll vote, so I'll ask the clerk to call for the vote, please.
So we will just call the of council members and then tally that up.
Okay. Alex?
Yes.
Then.
Yes.
You need to call, I'm sorry, you need to call, you need to call each member's name and then so it's all record.
Yeah.
Okay, so and then there's a bill, there was, I'm sorry.
Okay, Maritime?
Yes.
Phil Hyson?
No.
Amy?
Yes.
Amy Edward?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you.
All right.
I move to name, I mean, that airman.
Be nice to have more information about what's that, that they're going to be doing.
Hold, hold on, I think, did you want to make that motion? Because I would second it if you did.
It's on the table. I think she's taking charge now. I already discussed, I don't mind taking it down, but I think it's, it's here, it's on the agenda.
And I think we should have a liaison before it's formed because I think part of the liaison's job would be.
Yeah.
Maybe we need to go back to the other one then too, that's fine.
Okay. Okay, so so motion on the floor. Would you repeat your motion, Mr. Percip?
I move to name council, Eileen Morse as liaison to the emergency preparedness committee.
Is there a second? I second, I think, did you second her? Okay, second. All right, any discussion?
Well, I do think that we have, I I mentioned in my, you know, we think we need to have a minimal number of benefits. Liaison and a a committee person is too, I think. Oh, you're going to be on a cliff. You're definitely going to be on, you're going to be on that committee too.
Okay, good. Well, you got, maybe you can be on my.
The only, the only thing I have to, you know, to say about, you know, forming a committee, we're doing it for the businesses and the residents.
Yeah.
And it should be advertised, um, give everyone a chance, every business, every resident be on this committee. I think that um, the response we get would dictate what we need without.
Yeah. Yeah, it can be changed too, but.
We got to save time, favors on a lot of committees around. The same names follow, so, you know, if we can get the community involved and. Because they're the ones that we found to to um protect and defend, if you will.
We also think there's the distinction between liaison chairman, which isn't being established yet, which is, I think it's important to have. Which if you want to revisit Parks and Recreation, we can do that as well because.
The other color, my next, maybe it's, uh, we can review all of, like we were supposed to do at the annual meeting in January. And to see if we want to keep these committees or change them or change whoever's in charge or liaison too. So that, so. And it's in a sense, all these committees are are temporary until the annual meeting, I guess, but I do think this would be more of a temporary committee.
Any other discussion?
Uh, this is kind of obvious if she's got the battery, energy, the energy. And she's the motivator, I think, you being the liaison is the natural choice. And thank you for being interested and. Excited to let you see how it's going to go.
All right, we need to vote on this motion unless there's more discussion. Madam Clerk, let's do it the same way we did it last time.
Alex this side?
Yes.
Mr. Grisco?
Yes.
Maritime?
Yes.
Phil Hyson?
Phil Hyson.
Eileen Morse?
Yes.
Mr. Payne?
Motion passed.
No, all right, so we need to.
Five, one, zero, no, one, abstention.
And then. Okay, yeah, we're trying to get it.
I'm serious. Um, motion pass, five, one. Uh, five and approval, one, uh, zero, no, and then one abstentions from Bill Hyson.
Sounds accurate. Thank you all, fair and honorable.
Would you like to revisit?
Sure.
Parks and Recreation.
Sure.
I think the motion to appoint a liaison to. Parks and Recreation Committee, but we have to make a committee first, I guess.
We haven't, we haven't voted to establish a committee yet.
Yes, we did, last, last week.
Did we?
Yeah. Yeah, but you never. I don't have, I have three members, but one's two and a half, I should say.
But I move to nominate Bill Hyson as the liaison to the Parks and Recreation.
Your second?
Second.
Discussion on this?
The only thing I was going to say about this is it might be good to wait till next month if. Because we were, there was some hesitation you had, they'll, I don't mind.
Well, I don't have hesitation, I, I, I'm concerned that I might not have some members, but maybe I could get one of these people in who's sitting here and be a member. Necessarily, you get one more, because I, I think I can get some from the park, the hickman club. And they seem to be in an interesting stance, so I think I'll be able to, yeah, go and so, I don't know if it's necessary to have that. I don't think that, that's your call, I think, but I'll, I'll try to, if not, we'll just.
I will, uh.
Take it.
I'm fine with calling a motion if you want to wait.
No, I'll, I'll go, yeah, it might help to have that, because maybe that was the hesitation with the members too.
Thank you, Jack.
You're welcome.
So what motion are we voting on right now?
Phil as the liaison, I've heard.
Yes.
Motioned by Alex.
Yeah, and there's any more discussion? Madam Clerk?
Was there a second?
I second.
Okay, sorry.
Alex this side?
Yes.
Mr. Grisco?
Yes.
He's high.
Yeah.
Scott Hyson?
Yes.
This one?
Yes.
Mr. Payne?
Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
The motion to uh, appoint Bill Hyson liaison for the Parks and Recreation, uh, asked me to.
Uh, Mr. Pat Administrator, tell me about number eight. Is this something we have to do tonight or not?
Uh, we could go into a procession at the pleasure of, or at the discretion of council. And we'd be to specifically discuss performance. Um, and we have that, that's specifically how it's written and I have been given my upon that. Uh, but I, the agenda is at the pleasure of council.
Hi, motion, we go into closed session?
I'll say it. Before you need to do it, you need somebody to read.
Yeah, we need.
I make a motion that the council in our close meeting has authorized in subsection A of Virginia Code. Two point two dash three seven one one, specifically the subsection is for um. Discussion of this.
Well, you need to read the motion just.
About employment, so, okay. Discussion consideration interviews of prospective candidates for employment and assignment, appointment, promotion, performance. Demotions, salaries, disciplining or resignation of specific public officers, appointees or employees of. Demotions, salaries, disciplining or resignation of specific public officers, appointees or employees.
Specifically maintenance staff.
Yeah, you have to say.
Okay, specifically of the maintenance staff.
Yeah, is there a second to that motion? And all, any discussion before we take the votes? All in favor? Okay, we'll ask the cars to excuse us and uh this for your general information, Mr. Dwayne. Has retired, so he's got time that he might serve as ex-police officer and firefighter on your committee.
Wonderful.
He would be a good one, uh he's, because he's been around here thirty some years now. Thirty plus.
If you're interested, I'm tired of me.
Yeah, he can answer your questions.
And if you like parks.
Dwayne is on the last public safety committee, yeah.
I was on council years and years ago.
He was here for the big fire that I'm sure.
Yeah.
When all that sprung.
Yeah, we were all three those fires. And uh you're all too young.